I will speak to you in order. If so inclined, would you please stand in the face of the flag as we say the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the Vibe of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Mr. Stansfield, do we have any additions to the agenda? I do not. I have one addition, no good under five of new business. So it's a discussion I'm having on the amendment of policy two oh six that I just want to draw out there to see if you're interested in an amendment again, as we discussed before. We certainly won't take any action this evening, but this is a great discussion. Having said that, we've had an addition. I would look for a motion to approve the agenda and show. And five of these.
I'll make a motion to approve.
We've got another motion. Second, please.
I'll say it about.
Second, I'm moving. A new discussion. All in favor of the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Carry. Scheduling presenters, we have none publicly in court. Due to data privacy concerns, a speaker may not address criticism toward an individual district employee during public end call. Individual complaints should be handled privately with the billing administrators and officers superintendent. Comments from visitors must be informal in nature and may not exceed three minutes per issue. The board cannot engage in discussion or debate during those three minutes, but will take information and finding answers if that is appropriate. This part of the board protocol is unacceptable for any speaker to slander or engage in character assassination at a public meeting. Having said that, would anyone like to step up and speak to the board about matters of the school? And as you step up, just please declare who you are. Uh, this is legal.
This isn't odd.
I will be live for you.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Matt Helfer. I am here to read a letter that I'm going to mark on rope, mark stick. He like want to be here, but I said it would be designed to be half. So, um, Cannon Falls Schools was two hundred, some two hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars. Why? That is a question. January twenty-third, twenty twenty-two, the article was ordered by state and state aid by Cannon Falls School officials seem to indicate the district's financial woes are attributed to enrollment eight thousand forty-three students. Statements made by school officials indicate the loss of seventeen students due to attrition is a major reason for current financial budget cuts of some three hundred thousand dollars. To me, the bigger reason for lost discipline or the twenty-six thousand students that are in the district from not attending school in Cannon Falls have lost some two hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars. It would seem prudent for the Cannon Falls School Superintendent and Principal to work with parents and learn the reasons why students are leaving Cannon Falls Schools and attending other areas of schools. Should the district report to keep students in our Cannon Falls Schools? So I did my own research, I think, of parents and students, and here's what I learned about why students are rough in Cannon Falls Schools. Number one, student bullying. Despite the repeated attempts by parents and school administration, the bullying continued. Number two, observed girls making out with other girls in school hallways. Despite the repeated communication about parent and school administration, this bullying activity continued. Other students reported that this activity is observed regularly in school hallways. Number three, a biological male school math teacher presents as a female teacher and has informed students that he or she is willing to leave students before or after school to discuss into her transgender sexuality. The student reported this to the parent and the parent removed the student from attending Cannon Falls District Schools. Number four, students last attended math class days. I know social and emotional learning and LGBT politics in Cannon Falls area were on the best work force back in an approved by the school board in January tenth, twenty twenty-two. I'm not supporting any more of my tax money to pay for drugs like this. Half their apparent voices may be well heard if one of them federally in twenty twenty-two, mark on Cannon Falls. Thank you.
Good to know. Anyone else who needs to speak?
Professor Bill Rutt, and my wife and I have lived in Cannon Falls just five or three years. Three of our children graduated here. My wife taught on when she's twelve years, for nineteen years. Thankfully, our children are doing extremely well in their lives, so very confident. We thank the schools for the very good undergirding education that they received here and also what they were taught about how to care for other people and be respectful. We stand in favor of the school board. We know they're working hard. These are very complex times, very challenging. The school's mission is to make the school as good as it can be for every single student. And we are very much in favor of voting for the referendum that is going to improve the building, the grounds, technology, and the other areas of learning, improving the shop area, and sort of lighting candle of interest in learning, and some very important areas that are needed in our world today. So thank you for your very hard work. Appreciate it very much.
Thank you, Ken. Anyone else who needs to speak? Okay, who is close? Bill Rutt. Financial reporting. Mr. Davison?
I can probably place the bank's name in terms of all that. If I'm right here. This will be the financial report at the top. You'll see where our main accounts are at, as of the current, ladies and gentlemen. Current resources here are in checking accounts, as we discussed last week. Our scheduled five-year rotation for local banks and fiscal year. Current resources as of next December will be switching over. Merchants' check is our HSA checking account, essentially for display health savings account, as well as our school's student activity account. It's not quite in here, this is the HSA portion. We'll look at the top there, outstanding amounts of checks. It's usually what have been written in the last week or two that have been cashed by recipients. And the reason why it's so large this month is the insurance payments just went off last week. In the end of January is generally our principal interest stance on our mortgage issue for the district. Those payments went off the door, and a real good outstanding check balance at the top of the annual statement. The remainder of the worksheet is kind of a shoot the ends and outs of the district, and generally see payable as well as payable liabilities. And then the ideas could be client of state of the district that revenue as a year or two, like a fiscal year. Generally speaking, as people have been talking for weeks, we understand that ninety percent of the current fiscal year performance coming during our current year, and ten percent of follow-up next year. So there's always a hundred percent in the year, but it's just a mix of ninety percent of current year, ten percent of prior year. I will go through the bottom of this diagram to find, I think I go through middle of April, I think the diagram of CFO, which we did in the fiscal year, and we'll stay positive in our CFO, and then we need to go to participation borrowing. It's kind of the simple version of what the day questions today, but I can do my best to answer them today.
Further discussion, Josh. Thank you. Having heard none, I would look for a motion to approve the financial report, show. I'll offer a motion by bill. Second. Second, you'd like Brandon. Further discussion. All in favor of the approval of the financial report, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. And carry. Consent agenda. I consider the consent agenda considered routine and movie enacted under one motion. In the event that board member wants to discuss any single item, it can be revoked from the consent agenda for separate action. Jeff always likes to take the time to recognize the guests, so I'll let him know to you.
Thank you, Bob. We have the resolution and the donations from our many gracious partners within the district here in Perryville, here, everyone. I'll do a quick readout of these. There's a fifteen hundred dollar donation from two hundred waters LLC to our Bonbaht, which is a robotic program. We were giving twenty-five hundred dollars for May Open for our staff wellness program. Eleven thousand five hundred dollars from the Hankel Foundation for lighting in the auditorium. The Cannon Falls Fire Department, the League Association, made a thousand dollars for the girls' basketball program. Twelve hundred dollars for the girls' softball for nets, and then five hundred dollars for the robotics team. Best by employee, there's twenty-eight dollars to give by expense for PDIS in the elementary school. Two hundred and thirty dollars from the one again, career rating for insurance for real school, bicycle, instructional supplies. And then from the Cannon Falls Education Foundation, four thousand four hundred and thirty-eight ninety-five for Golds Orville Center for toolkits, procedures. Five thousand dollars for the Eagle Welfare. Two hundred dollars for multiple children's books. One hundred and sixty dollars and ninety-four cents for math teaching resources. Five hundred dollars for Spanish one and two literacy programs. Two thousand two hundred dollars and eight cents for small engine class tools. One thousand three hundred and ninety dollars and forty cents for recodeable books. Five thousand six hundred and fifteen dollars for a powder coat oven. And finally, seven thousand eight hundred eighty-nine dollars and seventy-five cents for iPads for our elementary music program. So I want to thank all our generous donors for this.
When you look at some of these, that foundation should give you an adjusted points of thousand dollars. My god, sorry, man, don't mean that. It's hard to put in words what partnership we get from the foundation. It's hard to put in words from independent entity, ladder, fire relief fund, because it's plenty of wealth, so the district may release both money done for us. Okay, does anyone have any questions about the remaining items on the consent agenda? And if not, I will look for a motion to approve the consent agenda and show.
I do have one question.
Sure.
On the monthly bills, page two. Neighbor tractor and equipment, purchase of eighty-eight hundred bucks. Just the clarification of.
What's the number?
The neighbor tractor and tire of page two of the monthly bills, check number sixty-five three one.
So the, uh, I guess UTV, yard TV, or the cheap, um, kind of part where it's.
True.
Problems in the, uh, as well.
Have this now, was, was he?
What's that?
Was it not a law?
Oh, yeah, check number sixty-five three one. I was just curious what that person.
So the original UTV bill, the, uh, just to pay for your initial block, we have some, uh, kind of the point where the take lines, uh, the point where you get your bag, you get the replacement machines, or, uh, places in that place. We have the updated plot and rush, so, uh, maybe it's.
Do you want to spend, just like this call under the budget for the maintenance?
Probably that's often the direction we need, so.
Any other questions for Josh, anyone else here? If not, I would look for a motion to approve the consent agenda and show.
Make a motion to approve.
We've got another motion.
I'll say it.
Bill on the second. I would discuss. All in favor of the approval of the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. And carry. Suits reporting.
Uh, just got a couple of things here. Policy four hundred and one that was passed early in our January, first January, maybe that's better to say it. Was it these pre-forth stopping the mandate for mandatory vaccines? That policy is not in effect right now, but it doesn't hurt to keep it in our policy vote, just something else to change, maybe now or so. The other items are COVID update. Uh, we want to be in Friday with our COVID committee to talk about our current present situation. Currently, both buildings are in full masking right now during the day due to the high case count that we have. Hopefully, in the next week or so, we will get better results than our weekly tolls, and we certainly go back to the mask being recommended in the test form, but we'll have to wait and see.
Can I ask a question about the COVID meeting?
Yeah.
So Luke was originally a community member on that. Bill and I were serving in kind of an ad hoc capacity, having three of us there. Are we going to have a forum issue?
Yeah, that won't be able to work.
Okay.
So, um, with you two, I guess we can discuss that at the organizational meeting, because that's more of an ad hoc.
Yeah, it's not like a state of the community.
So I don't know if you guys want to.
We'll, we'll talk.
Okay. Figure out. Yeah, three of you can do this, yeah. So.
Carry. The talk you had, or should.
Yeah, unless you guys have questions.
Action members, we have no old business. I mean, with new business, we have consideration to approve the fiscal year revised, fiscal year going through logic.
Mr. Davison is back up on the mic again. I'll call it up here before you.
Sure.
So a lot of financial she was going to open on the base, sorry, of, uh, open to the mission. Within the expenditure, a few of ours told at least seventy-two percent, a classic page in the revenue from twenty days, was created on to the main funds in the district. The general fund will be the main fund for the shake survey, uh, that would be the most true value, the one that our HSG, the most clearly out, and rest are really definitely for specific purposes. Let's look at the general first. At the top will be the revised version that the agenda to make. The middle section will be the original adopted version by the board in May. Something has changed since then. The teacher settlement has gone through, so there's some adjustment to that, probably the revised version. The state have worked out their final, uh, increased form program. We got a little bit of the student enrollment change from initial to where I am. And some things changed a bit. Where other ones I want to allow, so may not have to transfer the million dollars from general fund to others. In total, we will get is, uh, that was about thirty-four hundred dollars in general fund and the original budget to do that. Put that provision out, it would just over nine hundred thousand dollars. It's part of the statement of the general fund balance, uh, just made of designated undesignated funds. Undesignated refund, the district is able to use as discretion, uh, would be for, you know, pay increases or other actions throughout the school year that are maybe not looking forward, or to be for the district. Whereas the designated fund, for instance, that separation benefits or lump benefits that you may incite, or technology, uh, stability, or supposed to be, uh, would be designated specifically for that purpose. Per can, the paralogic, we're in about three, it's all three percent undesigned. Our overall, you can see that in more in the, you know, eight, twelve, sixteen percent actually, or the twenty for the district available, undesigned. Our policy would adjust to strike at six or eight, and we'll keep pushing to improve that as the medium's marks to improve. Interesting to realize, but we kind of on through, but all the rest here, this will be revised, uh, based one more time before the filing, uh, is completely completed in June. But an adjustment of revenue over extension of one sixty-six thousand dollars for the visitor based on current provision. Some little changes would be, uh, the initial speed count that is used for action purposes would involve eleven twenty-four. This one uses eleven thirty-four, the numbers pulled off of the M E site for Mars, and used into the state's weather protection model, so, uh, pretty accurate. I'm hoping maybe, uh, we target at times. Then we'll change five already, we can, this week as well, students have no payments on this, uh, the nature of what goes on in the district, uh, in a, what we do. Absolutely change, Josh.
Good.
So, uh, obviously we got a front of three kids, but it says that they were ten, ten kids better than what we started the year with, then.
Yeah, for, for using a projection model, I guess, but I think it's about correct, maybe not particularly, generally, which is correct.
Okay.
Those will be, you know, revised, or maybe there's much to be put in, compared to what we think. Teacher settlement, man, to put a fair way to think, maybe coming forward, and also adjusting out the actual solutions and variances in there in the revenue setting factors. What I think the biggest change to help the general fund is food services doing very well. And the left part of it is, um, because of, uh, previously small scout, uh, the way the state, uh, federal, because, uh, funny, food service right now, all considering begun, we're seeing really many for that, it was the old neighbors. And we also have other change in our special food service as, uh, brands has taken on the food service, direct proportion of that. So, uh, if it sits right now, the food service is not going to have transit from the general fund, so that's a moving out of the initial question, the issue by its own. Here's the goal of the food service, funds doing well, uh, that's, uh, is not acceptable, which is actually, I have the discussion going, um, what is acceptable to food service? I understand we just bought a dishwasher, uh, here or so home, and they were saving five thousand dollars, so we're not seeing anything excessive in the long term, but it's a big adjustment for, um, for the food service as needs like that arise, uh, to fund us. Maybe if we move on too far, uh, if we actually address this one, but there may be any questions on the general fund, and you ever add for that, like the current. Okay. Food industry briefly, and then the left portion of that, uh, is because of the federal funding of food services. One thing to note, it is maybe something that, uh, kids have to be not quite understanding, but as there are supply issues, uh, in your personal life, so do we have some of those who have one and need help right now, uh, obviously they're going to pull them forward, and sometimes there's substitutions for food that we're ordering. So maybe that sometimes may change for a while, but, uh, still being, you know, a full lunch each day, but, um, maybe I'm in, I'm in the day, and what we're, the, the game, but, um, food service is doing well currently. Food services, again, uh, that one, generally, you see there a positive, very volatile, and that's excellent for community, uh, and operating, uh, here, uh, negative. It is important to note that there are, well, four different funds, but that includes, uh, sorry, community, for community fund, um, preschool, uh, Cannon Kids, E C I P, and, uh, pre-teen, and they are all below deficit, uh, two is on their deficit, two are positive, but we're moving in the right direction. That's been a not moving issue, and as we talked about, it's in shape for our current operators, and with annual, like, minor layer orders, uh, it's not, um, it's not out of the norm for the, our sex to have that sort of issue with community, uh, and we see it striking that forward, and, uh, with this basis, right now, we're moving that in the right direction. Uh, there is a slight transfer in there from the new month to community, helping combat some of the, um, uh, the central worker COVID type related expenditures for employees that are in, uh, to be dead. Food services is really not a lot else to, 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 to set by, like, and, uh, let you send a common five percent of the need or requirement for the debt. Uh, our company does a nice job generally of receiving, uh, from taxpayers, and we usually live in a moment of debt access, and the state will, the state counties will reduce, uh, your revenue to offset that, so from our original projection, where the levy had not been sort of right at the first minute to come, I told right now, still with that, and that is, uh, would be to the taxpayer, the reduction, your taxes, mission investors portion of the head of access. Uh, first, A C, there's scholarship fund, uh, we learned very recently, I guess, from the first slide, I guess, but, uh, from prior, we, we started going with our scholarships and paying them all current, so, uh, some discussions, significantly multiple year scholarships, you know, two year, four, maybe a location or four year scholarship, or a traditional four year college. Michigan had to report back each year that they had guy agrees, and, um, the district wouldn't just pay directly, right at the start, so there's a little bit more expensing on the moved doors, got those funds into the issue, higher cost of payment, that's kind of how the, the trust energy scholarship has to work, so there's more expansion than nothing last year, but this is more back to the law for us, where, uh, we see revenue due to around sixty-five seventy thousand dollars, the expansion of commerce, seventy-five eighty-dollar costs is more drawn for district. Uh, it does send out new cheaper deals, um, some of the scholarships, uh, donors are now going directly to the street, concerned with the district, uh, as well as, uh, some little scholarships based off of, uh, the basis of interest. Uh, what we have on there, there's mobile expansion rooms for, uh, construction, open headquarters, open headquarters, the open headquarters, uh, that they have been set up, and also there's a whole bell center, um, there is a lot of toll there, because there's a chair room in the service, and that will be absorbed through the counties and handed back to the district. For any question, we're, we're ready as it sits, uh, and actually, if that's okay, or you can communicate with me, uh, in the office, phone or email, um, there's a lot of information there, but any more so in the office, any question, but truly my best answer.
I was just wondering if you could go back to the debt service, and explain what is, can go back to the taxpayers again, for what tax, tax.
Sure, so when we receive, uh, revenue this year from the counties, um, based on our common debt, uh, we receive, you know, there technically will be a little over one hundred and five percent of our revenue, so exactly five percent of revenue would reflect for that service. Any of you could say that if you were collecting, both to our fund, to the debt service, we can use those funds for other agents, uh, who's, uh, for you, scenario, uh, which is a, a Russian tax payer, probably just. They, that's, that's.
Our month is going back.
You know, based on what we're at there, uh, we're going to be, uh, initially revised as well as our ownership across.
Josh, how long is the free reduced lunch program benefit? We don't know how long.
Not quite sure. The initial rules, California, but I think it's kind of a risk. I think that not only can hold, but hold your districts, state, and the country, or I know that, um, so you get lunch to be, you know, and they get to, uh, the, uh, the day, and that it may be that things aren't monitored terribly, um, and it doesn't be very important to end, uh, parents and kids inside. It's not like that name, but always.
It's nice to see that we are finding some benefit of it.
Good.
Any other questions? Thank you. I would look for a motion to approve the revised fiscal year coming through logic, after motion by bill.
Second.
Second number, Aaron. I would discuss. All in favor of the revised fiscal coming through, would you say aye?
Aye.
Opposed. Carry. Consideration to approve a leave request in court with the teachers' master agreement article ten days of that since section seven, child barely, April eighteenth, is in break.
Uh, this one is for Katie Lemon, and I agree with that approval.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Brandon to approve the leave. I'll say it. Second, in my bill. I would discuss. Katie. All in favor of the approval of this leave request, say aye. All in favor of the approval of this leave request, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That is Kerry. Saying you under the reconsideration to approve the leave request in accordance with the teacher's master agreement, article ten days of that since section seven.
Uh, this is Mr. Tyler, I agree with your rule.
Motion to approve.
Rebecca on the motion.
Aye.
Who? Luca, the second. Other discussion. All in favor of this leave, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Kerry. Consideration to approve the Lindo family scholarship.
Yes, uh, this letter comes in from the Lindo family. Uh, the Lindo family would like to offer a thousand dollar scholarship to a graduate and senior each year. Uh, this is a new scholarship, we'll be awarded as follows. Uh, the Lindo family is awarding a scholarship of a thousand dollars to the graduate and seniors, the scholarship can be used. At a two or four year college or university or technical college, this scholarship will be based on character and a five hundred word essay in how. Their experience in the bottom of baseball will help them make a positive impact in the world. Recipes will be chosen by the Lindo family. On approval from you, I would add this to the other local scholarships, and it's from Riley. And I agree on approval on this.
Okay. Luca on the motion. Second.
Second.
Second number, Rebecca. Other discussion.
Uh, thanks, uh, thanks to the Lindo family for their generous, uh, scholarship. Much appreciated.
If long term commitment toward community and our school. Anything else? All in favor of approval of the scholarship, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Kerry. This is just a discussion I have thrown this up in the past, that our two oh six policy regarding public input needs to be more clearly defined in my book. We have some, some folks that believe they have a, um, a right to speak for an extended period of time. And I think that we spelled out what we know to be the true meaning of two oh six, but we haven't spelled it out well enough, nor have we updated it at all. And uh, one of the areas I noticed when I was looking at other school boards and their policies, as if I have nothing better to do than looking at other people's policies. Um, the one that struck me was the fact that, um, one of the school district clearly states that they listen to input from people from the district. And I think that's what we're here to do, is listen to people that live in our district. Uh, so I'd like to be able to bring that with the recommendations from the M S B A, which, which sent some boilerplate changes for consideration. Not necessarily that they have to be handled, but for discussion. They also communicate that this is one of those policies that, um, due to its nature, that we don't have to have two readings on. So we can pretty much decide, and if you choose to do so, to okay that policy, more than update or refinement, if you will. So just kind of looking for input, if, um, John had gone here, something that one should be discussing.
Well, I think, um, it provokes us to look back at, at public policy, that. If I statute would not require to add public input section, and so. But the war is out, we've done that as far as that, I don't worry. And so, you know, we're just looking for clarifying and narrowing down specifically the.
Many policies are designed to fit us, some are boilerplate for all schools, and that's the way they are being. But, um, um, if you believe that we should be at least mainly user friendly for our community, I think it, it, it needs some discussion. Other thoughts? Not over getting to a subject, but maybe you can discuss it, if you're happy with that.
Well, I think, when you read it, I think, uh, it counts of informational nature not to execute it by, you know, uh. Basically on the agenda of the meeting, we've been speaking to how long the question could speak. Um, I think that makes sense, I mean, we're here to do business, but also wanting to hear from the public, um, school managers. Um, so, as far as the personal, let's see, where's? Individual complaints, Daniel Brad, I mean, this isn't the voice to handle the grievance, and so I think that makes sense. So, um, we, we want to the discussion as far as residents, taxpayers.
Yeah, I guess, this chairman, um, I think we just should record that, to have the public input and, uh, to allow, to allow the community members to speak, um, on issues. Uh, I would just encourage those folks to also reach out to us privately. Uh, it says we may have any doubt, kind of, uh, so if you need to, you just understand that if you're looking for answers, the best way is, is to reach out personally via, I think. So, just, I remind you of anything.
Yeah, sometimes the, uh, I think what they're looking to do in many cases is not to embarrass folks on either side of the line of the phone with, uh, with questions that can be answered. Uh, by the administration or private principals, I guess principals or administration, sorry about that. But, uh, things that we can take care away from the, uh, school board, that's kind of what it's designed to do, but. Um, yeah, I, I think I agree with what you're saying here. We'll bring some information in the next meeting, you can take a look at it and see if you want to refine it, redefine it, or whatever.
Well, I think, I mean, I just want to clarify, I think the goal here is to really encourage a healthy conversation and to keep that line of communication going. It's not about, you know, limiting that options, about clarifying who can come to the meeting and have that voice, and we're not trying to discourage that, but just kind of clarify, here's. How we can feel like we can have that appropriate opportunity for input. And I think the challenge is, I think sometimes folks think that it is a dialogue, or that it's a debate, and it's not, so. And I think we've had some meetings where we skirted a little quote, too close to a debate, and it's, it's uncomfortable. Because nobody leaves that conversation feeling like they've been heard.
Okay.
Well, I, I think that's a good point, Rebecca, because the policy mentions the word discussion.
Yeah.
And the discussion isn't really from the field to the board, it's the field telling us their concerns and for us to have discussion. And not the debate.
Yeah, I think that's, that's fairly clearly discussed at a, at our last convention meeting, as a matter of fact, it's not a. It's not an opportunity for discourse between, between the public and us, this is, oh, this is a school board meeting, but the public is invited. And can give input when so requested, but it isn't.
But I think at, at times, some of the questions or concerns that have come up at public comment, because at the beginning, they do get answered. In the business department, and we have addressed those when they come up, and so it doesn't want to back up against.
Yeah.
I think that's where you're.
Yeah.
That's what I was going to say too, because it states that we will find answers if that is appropriate, or if it is something on the agenda where there is more information that will come up in discussion later. Maybe that we will address questions when we can, or if it's something that's not on the agenda, then it's something you would have to come back to. If we find answers, we'll come back to that.
There seems to be a number of ways to, uh, treat public input. Uh, some districts require you to request time ahead of time. Um, I was watching one where they had, had written postcards with people's names on them, they, uh, they wrote their name and. They were called upon by the chair to come up and speak when it was their turn. It makes for a very orderly conversation, but again, we don't, we don't want to step on anybody's rights to speak here, so. We can discuss how we want that to happen, if they need to check in at the district office ahead of time, if they want to. Um, have postcards there with their names on it, we can call on this time, we can just, we can have that discussion in a subsequent meeting, but I just wanted to bring it up. Okay? Anything else on that subject? Hey, our six o'clock meeting is over. Now.
Get in, Lieutenant.
Yeah.
I know what we, we need to make a statement here, our six o'clock meeting is over, because we're, we're, um, scheduled for seven, we won't start ahead of seven. Because that's the way things happen, so we'll take a timeout, and, uh, at that point in time, specials and workshops and closed meetings. Are three areas where public input, uh, usually doesn't happen, but we'll figure out something to, uh, have people speak their piece during the, during the referendum discussion. And, uh, quite frankly, I'm not sure how that's going to happen when it comes to the presentation itself, but we'll figure that out. So we'll see you all hopefully at seven P M, I look for a motion to adjourn.
I will second that.
Luca on the motion to adjourn, Rebecca on the second. Other discussion. All in favor of adjourned at the first six o'clock meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. See you in a second.